Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, February 15th, 2024. We are meeting at one government center in the first floor hearing room pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F. I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices by Fall River Government TV, Mr. Craig Salvador, recording both video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Our recording secretary this evening is Ms. Nina Kruger, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members John Frank, James Calkins, Dan DePere, Ricky Sahadi, and alternate member Eric Kelly. Also with us tonight is the Director of Engineering and Planning, Mr. Dan Aguirre, sitting to my far left, and Chris Pereno, the Assistant Planner, sitting to my far right. Nina, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA and Mass General Law 48 as amended?
Yes.
In that case, I declare the February 15th, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons before the board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone in opposition to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chair. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after the decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance 2015-1, sorry, -11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan review. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the code enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multi-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizens' input on zoning board's specific matters at the end of the meeting. I'll note that there is a sign-up sheet at the table just outside the door if you wish to speak at that time. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. With that, let us begin. There is no old business under new business, calling case number one Hyde Development LLC, care of attorney Thomas P. Koloran, 75 Fifth Street, MAP, N-20, Lot 55. The applicant seeks to convert the existing structure into 27 residential units. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 86-445A, 86-25A, 86-376A of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance to reduce the number of parking spaces, waive applicable setback measurements, front, side, and rear yard, and to allow multifamily use in an AOD Arts Overlay District. The property is located in a CBD, Central Business, zoning district and an AOD Arts Overlay District.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Thomas Koloran, representing the applicant, Hyde Development LLC. As the chairman has stated, we're here before you this evening seeking special permit relief with regard to the property located at 75 Fifth Street in Fall River. I think many of you were on this board a year or year and a half or so ago, but by way of background, this property came before you, and I believe it was the September of 2022 hearing, essentially asking for the same relief. There has been some slight modifications from the prior plan that was approved, but per the terms of that decision, the variance was to be executed, or excuse me, the relief was to be executed within one year, and it has not been. But again, the plan that's before the board tonight is slightly different. The overall premise remains the same. There's an existing, pre-existing, non-conforming structure. As you can see from the plan, it sits pretty flush up against Fifth Street and the neighboring property. The proposal is to convert this existing structure to 27 units. There is a proposal, just like there was last time, to slightly expand the building upward, but not to expand the footprint at all. The proposed height, once completed, will be roughly around 58 feet. The zoning ordinance allows for up to 70 feet and will certainly stay within the parameters of the zoning ordinance. One of the issues, I think, that came up before the board at the last hearing, or one of the main concerns as expressed by the board, was the parking ratio. The prior plan proposed 20 onsite parking spaces, and I believe the developer at that point secured some off-street parking spaces as well. We're happy to report that we were able to reconfigure the parking and come up with 27 spaces, so we'd be able to provide a one-to-one, one parking space per unit on the property onsite without having to leave the premises. The unit makeup, again, being 27 units, proposed being 21-bedroom units and seven two-bedroom units. One of the things I did note on the plan in preparing for tonight, you'll note the parking spaces that are along the building where it has the number five with the circle around it are shown as compact parking spaces, being 16 feet deep, with a 22-foot drive aisle in between the parking spaces that sit on the rear of the property, those nine spaces. It's actually an error. What we're intending to do there is keep those parking spaces, the five where it says 16 feet deep, being 17 feet with the drive aisle 21 feet apart. That's consistent with the parking spaces that are going to be located on the garage level of the property. As you can see, there's the ones that front along Fifth Street show a 17-foot depth with a 21-foot drive aisle. So the ones on the interior and exterior will be the same in the sense that we'll have nothing less than 17 feet. The parking spaces, again, the nine along the rear of the build, excuse me, rear of the property, will be 18 feet deep, again, but the minimum being 17 feet deep on property. Again, effectively, we're looking for a special permit, virtually identical to the relief that was previously granted. However, we would suggest to the board that the one-to-one parking ratio that we're providing should be more than adequate for the proposed use. I would direct the board's attention to some relief that was granted on some nearby projects, specifically the Merrill Building on Troy Street, where it's my understanding that the parking was, onsite parking was waived in its entirety. We're certainly not looking for any kind of dramatic relief like that, again, being able to provide one spot per unit. And I would also direct the board's attention to the property being located in the Arts Overlay District. One of the things that the Arts Overlay District is trying to stimulate is this type of development, a, excuse me, residential uses mixed with art uses, trying to bring some vitality to these neighborhoods, and repurposing an otherwise unused building, a building that's been vacant for some period of time, I would suggest certainly falls within what the hopes of what the Arts Overlay District is trying to accomplish, again, to get bodies, to get pedestrians down into these areas and breathing life back into these sections of the city. So again, what we're looking for is a special permit. We don't need any kind of variance relief from the board. We'd certainly suggest that the proposed use is not detrimental, more detrimental to the neighborhood than what could otherwise be placed there. Obviously, I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Just one question, Attorney Koloran.
Yes.
I do remember this coming before us in September of '22. I don't have the initial proposal in front of me. I'm just curious as to what you did to reconfigure to get to 27 from 20.
Fair question, Mrs. Sahadi. If you bear with me for one moment, I can get out the prior plan. So on the, what I'll call the, I'm trying to find the directional on here, so the, kind of the northwesterly side of the property where the nine parking spaces are located, what was previously proposed there was a total of eight spaces, so we were able to get one more parking space there. And then along the building where those five parking spaces are located, they didn't have any parking there. Looks like they had a proposed loading area that we moved from that area, and again, we're able to get five parking spaces. There was a dumpster located in that area, which we've shifted slightly to the southwest on our proposed plan that allowed us to get those five parking spaces there. And then on the interior of the building, where they have the three parking spaces on the, again, northerly side, we were able to reconfigure the three spaces and get an extra one, so a total of four up in that area. And then there was eight spaces along Fifth Street, and we were able to add one more space in there.
Rick, I think a big issue of what's changed on this plan is utilizing the location of the existing overhead door that comes off of Fifth Street and accessing the parking inside of the building from that point, rather than coming in through the rear parking area. When you ate up a drive aisle to get into the building in the grade parking lot, that ate up two or three spaces. So by utilizing the driveway that's currently right off of Fifth Street, that allowed you to create some additional spaces in that upper parking area and allowed you to create the inside layout a little bit differently. And also, I believe this has probably a few more compact spaces than what was previously proposed on the original plan.
So in the original plan, the overhead doors were not to be removed?
They weren't being utilized, no. They actually had a couple of spaces in front of there. The layout just wasn't well thought out.
And then also on the interior of the structure where there were these, on the old plans, there were these two fairly large hatch, no parking areas. We were able to reduce those slightly and, again, squeeze some more spaces in there. But to Mr. Aguirre's point, actually, on the interior parking spaces along Fifth Street on the old plan, all of the, they had eight, we have nine, but they were all 16 by nine. We're actually have 17 by, 17 by nine, yes, 17 by nine, so they're actually a little bit larger. We were able to actually get better measurements, we think, on the interior of the building, showed that we had an extra two feet there beyond what they showed on their plan.
And through site plan review, Rick, they'll have to meet these numbers, you know, for dimensions and numbers. So if we get through site plan review and we go and inspect the interior of the building or, you know, get full design, and they can't meet these requirements, then they may need to come back, you know, before this board. And when the board looked at it the last time, the fact that they couldn't provide one-to-one onsite, the board had asked for that increased ratio per bedroom because they were relying on off-site locations, because they just felt that they couldn't get to the one-to-one onsite.
Thank you, Attorney.
And this creatively gets 27, avoids, if we approve, this ratio, avoids off-site parking and that hassle that goes with it.
Yeah, we had the discussion last time, you know, when we look at this neighborhood where we have liberty utilities across Fifth Street and then served as bus station directly north of it, after the hours of, you know, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, these streets are fairly wide open. And that was part of the decision when the board, what they considered when they were talking about the Merrill Building and the availability of on-street parking once business is closed for the day.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a very different situation.
But it's thankful that they didn't go to the rule of, you know, we don't want to provide any on-street spaces.
Okay. Any other questions from the board, comments? Nothing, John? Jim? Dan? Turning to the general public, those in attendance, anybody here wish to speak in favor of the development? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Your hearing done, and Dan, thank you for the input on that. Anything else?
No, just that, I mean, the entire project can be moved under 86-376, under a number of, you know, enumerated sections in that, and as well as 86-445 for the actual parking, which allows for the reduction in number and the reduction in size of aisles and spaces.
So no variance required?
No variance, no variance is required.
Even though it was written out.
And I think that's part of the problem the last time, was if they had proceeded the first time solely as a special permit, I don't think they put it in as being in an Arts Overlay District on the initial submission. So they wanted to move as a variance, and that's why the one-year expiration, if it was a special permit, it still would have been valid.
Yeah, that's what threw me. I couldn't remember that it was a variance at the time until I went back and looked at it, because I couldn't, because I know we changed to two years on special permits.
It's not our job to tell them how to file.
Went to the state standards, so.
Yeah.
All right. In that case, I turn to the board for a...
There was nothing in the audience? I know you asked, but I don't know if anybody had.
I did, I asked. Thank you, though.
That's okay.
You better keep me honest.
Make a motion to grant a special permit. Does it have to be bifurcated?
It does.
I'll make a motion that it is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ricky?
Yes.
Very good. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. And then a second.
And now I'll make a motion to approve the petition, subject to site plan review, and a one-to-one ratio for parking.
Just, Mr. Chairman, on that, I know the plan shows for those five spaces along the building at 16 feet, we would suggest making that 17 feet with the drive aisle at 21 feet. I don't know if you want to incorporate that into the motion.
I don't think it needs to be incorporated after you presented it that way, but...
Okay.
Because on the plan, it actually says 17-foot spaces, 21-foot aisle, so.
No, no, no.
That's 22 and 16 on the plan.
Right. No, no, but there's a notation on the plan where it says the relief that's requested says 21-foot aisle, 17-foot spaces. I think it's like at the top left-hand corner.
Okay, I got it.
So I think it's just a square zero of that number, so.
Are you engineers?
At a minimum of 17 feet spaces and 21 feet for the aisles.
Good catch.
That's my motion.
Very good. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Jim Calkins on the motion. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, gentlemen.
You going to sell this thing now?
I'm not, thankfully. I can actually go home.
Celebrating Valentine's Day.
One day late, yeah.
It's half price on the day after.
That's right, exactly. You'll be buying cars today.
Petition number two, Alexis Anselmo, care of attorney Mackenzie J. Long, 159 Lawrence Street, MAP, I-22, Lot 11. The applicant seeks a variance to convert the existing single-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling with the ground-level garage space being converted into two single-bed studio-style apartments. Per design, the existing footprint, waiving dimensional and setback requirements in a BL, local business zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening to the board. For the record, Attorney Mackenzie Long here, representing my client Alexis Anselmo. As Mr. Chair pointed out, we are here to seek relief and a variance for the conversion of the single-family dwelling. I do want to make a note, you noted it as 159, it is 150 Lawrence Street. Outside of that, everything was correct. So we are seeking relief from both the dimensional requirements under Chapter 86, Section 35, as well as the side yard setback requirement. We do have an existing, prior existing non-conforming. It is nine and a half feet, as you can see, on the easterly portion of this building as opposed to the required 10. Outside of that, we need all other setbacks. We do, as you can see, have three parking spaces currently in front of the building, and then a little bit further down Lawrence Street to the west, there is already a curb cut that exists. Right now, it's just dirt. The applicant is proposing that it be tarred or potentially added stone there regardless to add an additional three spaces so that we could meet the parking requirement of two spaces per dwelling unit. The conversion would note that the existing space and the existing footprint of the building will not be changed, and the intent is to add two one-bedroom units on the first floor, which is currently a garage, just has a roll-up door in the front right now with a three-bedroom apartment upstairs. The dimensional requirement here would require 8,000 square feet for the three-family, but we have 7,074 square feet, so a little under 1,000 square feet shy of the requirement. Plenty of room, as you can see, for the parking off-street. There is also a few on-street parking spaces out front that are utilized typically by the existing tenants. Outside of that, I believe the board is provided with a architectural plan showing the interior design that was submitted. I don't know if that is also...
Yep.
Perfect. Just to give you a taste of what the design intent is.
How many square feet are the two-studio apartments?
I believe they're just under 600 square feet apiece.
Just curious, bigger than a tiny house and smaller than a bedroom.
Yes, yes, exactly. Kitchen, living room combined in the front with a bedroom, bathroom to the rear. Outside of that, you know, we are just requesting that the board grant a variance with the requested relief. Any questions?
From the board, any questions? We already have two curb cuts, so we don't even have to worry about that. There is a second curb cut there, yeah.
Concrete driveway.
There's a concrete driveway right in front of the big garage door. The fence probably has to go, but that's for them to work out.
The intent is to remove the fence, just for ease of entrance.
Just to access the...
Yeah, right now, the fence makes it a little tight to get the three cars in the driveway, so we will be taking the fence down. I'd also like to note that the applicant doesn't intend to live in one of the units.
There's got to be history behind this lot. It's got to be left over from something that is one of the strangest sheet pieces.
We looked into it, you know, it did get relief, and I don't even understand why it got relief the first time, except for that it was existing non-conforming with regards to the side yard setback, because it was just a garage that they converted, the second floor, which could have been done as a special permit for a pre-existing non-conforming structure, but they apparently sought relief. So what it comes down to is basically, you know, a very minute area variance of, what did we say, 500 square feet or about 1,000 square foot difference? The pie shape is fairly irregular. It does sit on the corner of the street, which is what forces that pie shape. If it was not on a corner, probably would have been more rectangular, so I would say that there is some uniqueness to the shape of the lot with regards to the lack of the area.
Yep.
It exceeds the frontage requirement, so fairly odd for the district, which only requires 50 feet of frontage.
There are quite a few multifamilies in the area as well, just to mention that.
Yeah, the three-family use is allowed in the BL district, that's the cap for what's allowed for a number of units, so.
Could this have come in as a special permit?
Could it have?
Yeah.
Now, no, because it's an area, yeah, they need a waiver of the area requirement.
For the three bedrooms.
Because right now...
Not conforming to begin.
Not conforming with regards to setback, not for use or area.
Oh, okay.
And so currently now, they could convert the first floor to one unit by a matter of right, so. There's always the need for more affordable units.
The building was actually constructed by the applicant's father.
Really?
Yeah, in the early 90s.
Was it business or?
Yes, I thought. She lived upstairs, and they ran the business on the first floor.
If you look at it this way, Jim, if it had gone to a two-unit, you would have probably had three bedrooms downstairs, too. So this way, you've got the two studio units, single-bedroom units. Works out nicely. Any other questions from the board, comments?
I'm assuming no exterior renovations except windows, right?
No, just, yeah, exactly. And the bottom right now is brick, like, showing, so we're going to cover that up.
Yeah.
Get rid of the garage door.
Yeah, exactly. Add windows.
Might be nice.
Be a little dark in there without the windows.
Might be nice, yeah. Okay, very good. Turn to the general public. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Your hearing none. I turn to the board. I have no further questions on it. The board does not...
No approval? Has yet been.
Second.
All right, approval, motion to approve, and a second, no conditions, shouldn't be really. All right, that being the case, on the, on the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Turning to... Petition number three, Joseph Gonadaro, care of attorney Peter A. Salino. My brain is going soft on me. Hang on a second. Don't take it personally, Peter.
I'm not, I'm admiring the new table. I love it.
I know.
It's a significant upgrade.
You know, it's fantastic.
The Rubbermaid table, I'll miss it, but this one's very nice.
All right, again, I apologize. This is for...
That one's tough to flip, so be careful.
Yeah, where did this come from?
Diamond, Diamond probably built it.
I noticed it a week ago. Actually, no, you know where I think it came from? Remember, there used to be the table outside?
Yeah.
If you look underneath those stairs, they closed that in and made closets with storage.
I saw that, yeah.
So I think that might be where that table came from, but I don't know.
I'm impressed.
Very nice, very nice.
Anyway, this is 267 Grattan, Grattan Street, MAP, E-18, Lot 11. The applicant seeks a variance to subdivide property into two buildable lots and construct a single-family dwelling on each lot according to plans, waiving lot area frontage and side yard setbacks in an R8 single-family zoning district.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Peter Salino. I represent the applicant petitioner. With me is my client. Could you say your name for the record?
Joseph Gonadaro.
Mr. Gonadaro owns the lot at 267 Grattan Street. The proposal before the board, as Mr. Chair read, is to divide the existing lot into two lots such that two single-family homes could be constructed. The waivers sought our area frontage and side setback in the R8 district. In terms of my hardship argument, if, I don't know if anybody in the words of David Assad has done any independent research, but I went out to this site, and it significantly slopes to the east. So if you're standing in the street looking at the lot to the left, there's a significant downward slope. So I think our best hardship argument here is the topography of the lot, and the justification for that is, given how low the easterly side of the lot is, and if you notice the retaining wall on the westerly side of the lot, I think it's only feasible to reconstruct the dwelling if there are two. Ultimately, here, there was a house that burned down, leaving us with this vacant lot that the cost of fill and other things make it untenable. And so as a result, I've called out in my petition that I think the hardship's the topography. I've called the board's attention to the fact that, notwithstanding the fact that we're asking for these variances area-wise and frontage-wise, that the size of the lots as proposed is still consistent with the neighborhood, I called out 339 Reynoed, 278 Grattan, 248 Grattan, and 306 Grattan as being depicted on Mr. Geosis' plan and comparable in size and scope to the proposed lots. So I'm happy to field any questions from the board, but that is our proposal, that is the hardship argument, and we can rest on that.
I agree with you on the hardship. I am, I was surprised at how much that slopes. Probably at, what, six feet from one side to the other?
I would say at least.
I think it's eight, eight or nine, yeah.
Eight or nine, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think something to think about, and you can't tell by this plan, all by the area... Mr. Chair, I think something to think about, and you can't tell by this plan, all by the aerial. But if you went back and looked at historic aerials, the existing house that was there was pushed off way to the high side. Because of, you know, trying to contend with utilizing the entire area was not feasible because of the elevation difference.
Are your neighbors, especially those on the downhill side, obviously they're aware of this, they would have been notified, so. Did this have to go to site plan because?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Obviously concerned about drainage, et cetera.
Right.
All right, I think it's, I think it's a reasonable use, any other questions from the board at this time?
To off-street parking, Frank?
Yes, Mr. Frank.
No, just be a short driveway, no garage, right, oh yeah, it's a garage.
One has a garage.
One proposes a garage, but yeah, both have twenty-foot driveways for off-street park.
Let's turn to the audience, anyone here wishing to speak in support of the petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please, okay, bunch, when we start over here, and if you please identify yourself with your address.
My name's Julia Jasmine, I live at two oh eight Frost Street, I am in a butter. And again, the board has always been very supportive of the Maplewood Association. And my late husband and myself have worked very hard to keep the neighborhood the way it is. Not to kind of put houses on postage stamps. We fought last year for one on the corner of Reynod and Grattan. And through the years, a few more on Grattan Street, and the board always supported us. This is just to make money. It's not conforming to the neighborhood, because it's all single-family homes, not, and I don't think it should be, I really don't. You know, I'm eighty years old, I've been coming down here for almost fifty years to try to save our neighborhood. And then you get these builders or people that buy these lots, they don't live in the neighborhood. But they're willing to put up houses on postage stamps. It's a big piece of property, but the people that live there, live there for many a years. And that's all I have to say.
I appreciate that, thank you. Anyone to speak also?
Hi, my name is Robin Sheen, I live at three fifty Frost Street. So I'm against this, the hardship is the land, I guess. The man can put one house on there, the, the frontage is going almost half the size of the R-eight zoning. Should be, I think it's eighty, eighty feet, and he wants to do fifty feet. So he's just taking advantage of this, he can build one house, so why is it a hardship? And I don't actually remember that house burning down.
Was this just abandoned or knocked down?
Yeah, I don't know what happened to it, but it didn't burn down, I don't think.
They did.
They moved it.
Bought. Bought the property and they...
And they knocked it down, they were going to build it.
Yeah, so why, why not tell the city about the, the house not being there? But to put a frontage fifty feet when it should be eighty feet, that's almost half the size. He is able to build one house on that property, and there was one house on that property, I don't understand the hardship.
I will point out that there are other lots that are undersized as far as frontage, there's actually some that are less than fifty feet.
Right, there are, there are, but they're, they've been existing for years. You know, if I would have, I just found out about this meeting when I was at work today, but some of those houses have been there forever. There are houses that were built in nineteen hundred that are on small lots, but I mean, that's over a hundred years ago. You know, so it's just, it's just going to take away my property value and the neighbors' property values. And we, we do, we, we're coming here all the time for this, it's, it's all about breed and opportunity, you know, at our expense. And at the city's expense in the long run, you know, so. But it's not, it's not a hardship.
Thank you for the input, yeah?
Hi, I'm Olga Dunzwell, I live at three oh-six Grattan Street, like, right diagonally from the lot. Yes, that house wasn't burned, it was knocked down. A couple had bought it down the street from us, they broke up, they sold the property. That's how it happened, it was knocked down. Yes, it's going to affect my value of my house with two houses. Okay, there's going to be parking, parking, where are these people going to park? Yeah, they have a parking lot, but when they have family coming over and all that, where are they going to park? You only can go one way or the other way, two sites are parked, have cars parked there. I don't want to see this, I don't want to be watching for people up and down, and I have little kids, grandkids that I have to take care of. All week. Do I have to watch for all this going on? No. That, that lot sounds big enough for two and be comfortable. Let's keep Maplewood the way it is. Extend one house, I'm, I'm with it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Girillo, three thirty-nine Reynod Street. And you're right, my lot might be small, that house was built in nineteen thirty, I'm on the corner of Reynod and Grattan. Okay, put in two houses, sorry, please back up. Put in two houses there, it's going to encroach on everybody else. Why do we need the two houses, it's going to take away from the, the big yards we all have. And like Olga said, the parking, they might have parking near parking space, but you can't park on both sides of the road, on that street. They're going to park with, in front of a driveway, in front of a driveway, I mean, it's, it's not feasible to do that. And again, like you also, they come from someplace else to build a house, they sell it and, and go. They're not living there with us in the neighborhood. And I'm opposed to this, I mean, I don't, and it's going to probably stop digging and then, then put up a big eight-foot fence. I don't want to see that, I really don't agree with what happened to your houses there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, questions from the board?
Any, any response, Attorney Salino?
Yeah, I mean, my responses are probably similar to responses I've made in the past. We're certainly here at the zoning board because it doesn't comply with zoning, we understand what we can build by right. It doesn't make sense for my client to build one house. I've made what I think is a decent argument under forty A, not what people want to see, but what standard this board has to make a finding of. Which is hardship relating to soil, shape, or topography. I didn't talk about shape, because the shape's perfect, okay? But I certainly did talk about topography, I've been out there, and I think that is a cogent legal argument that supports this petition. Notwithstanding the fact that the neighborhood, maybe it's an unpopular proposal in the neighborhood. But there's no question that we've provided parking as is consistent with other projects in the city. There's no question that my client doesn't live in the neighborhood, and there's no question he's asking for relief. Notwithstanding what's been said, we think the relief is reasonable, appropriate, and consistent with the neighborhood. And we don't think that we're eroding people's yards or property values, but in fact, probably raising value, given the fact that this is new construction. Which is beneficial to the neighborhood and beneficial to the city in the long run from a tax base perspective. Again, notwithstanding the arguments made by butters.
You know, again, area, area frontage and side yard is... I'm speaking, thank you. I, I will, as soon as I finish, thank you. Area fronted side yard, we seem to do it a lot, but it's still three variances, basically.
No question.
No question.
No question about it.
Which is a lot. I'm going for, I'm sorry, who else wanted to speak again, yes, ma'am?
When, when he bought the lot, he knew it was the, whatever you call it, you know, the way the land went. So why did he buy it? You know, there was one house there for many a years, I've been where I, I lived for fifty-three years.
I, I understand.
As an owner of the land, he has not done anything to clean that land, we've had to look at that. Grass not being cut, piles of dirt in the yard, the fence is all broken down. So he has no pride in our neighborhood, but he's willing to buy, to build two houses so that he can make a profit on it. And we got to live there for the rest of our lives. I bought in the Maplewood area because I like the Maplewood area, it's like the Highlands, you don't see houses like that up the Highlands.
You need to take a drive through the Highlands.
The Maplewood area is one of the nicest neighborhoods and safest neighborhoods in the, in the, in the city. We've been told that by the, recently, they've come to our meetings.
Agreed.
And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board, gentlemen? I'm going to turn to the board for, you've already weighed in.
I have nothing else.
Comments before we, before we seek a motion? Refer to both sides, gentlemen. We can move to a motion. Actually, we have to move to a motion, it's our job. What are you thinking, Dan?
The consistency with the other, there's five other, four of the lots in the same street, right across the street, and abutting there. Small or the same size. With that, I'll make a motion to grant.
Is there a second on that?
Well, do we have conditions?
Yeah. Planning, just...
Per the plan?
Just ask per the plan, to off-street parking, site plan.
Oh, as drawn, and a site plan review. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second, from Ricky Sahadi, then on the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins? John Frank? Chairman Perri, no.
Denied.
It requires a supermajority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, petition number four, Rodman Enterprises LLC, seven seventy-one Rodman Street, Lot I twenty-two, I'm sorry, map, I twenty-two, Lot fifteen. The applicant seeks a variance to demolish the existing garage at seven seventy-one Rodman Street. And construct four townhouse-style apartment buildings consisting of a total of fourteen units. Two four-unit buildings and two three-unit buildings. As per plan, waiving yard setback and lot coverage in an A-two apartment zoning district.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants. Here representing Rodman Enterprises LLC, the applicant for the petition that's before you tonight. Seven, seven seventy-one Rodman Street is located on the south side of Rodman Street. It has one hundred feet of frontage on Rodman Street itself. It does wrap around, and also has a hundred and seventy-two feet, or just over a hundred and seventy-two feet on Holyoke Street. And an additional one hundred and fifty-five feet of frontage on Salem Street. Which is unimproved, unapproved, unimproved right away. The property is located in the apartment two, A-two zoning district. There are currently two commercial garages on the property. Number seven seventy-one is a six thousand four hundred square foot auto repair facility. Which is located towards the front of the property on Rodman Street. And there's also a second garage, approximately thirty-five hundred square feet, located on the west side of the property adjacent to Holyoke Street. That, that garage, it's my understanding, is currently leased by the City of Fall River. That lease is coming, or will be expiring at some point towards the end of this year. As you, it's tough to pick out on this plan, but as you can see, there is a twelve-foot encroachment on the main garage, the seven seventy-one Rodman Street garage. Into the right-of-way on Salem Street. And there's also existing asphalt that comes from in front of that garage that extends to the east as well, into the, the right-of-way of Salem. Some of that asphalt is being used by the auto repair facility, and some of it is being used for parking on the abutting property to the east. The uses that, that the property currently has and the structures themselves are both pre-existing, non-conforming. The lot itself is conforming, does have the minimum, minimum frontage and area required for a lot in the A-two zoning district. The proposal that we have before you tonight is to basically demolish the two existing garages. And to construct four townhouse-style buildings containing fourteen units total. Two of the buildings would be three-unit buildings, and two of them would have four units. As you can see, the hardship that we're up against here is quite clearly the shape of this lot. It's one of the most irregular-shaped lots I've seen in the city, it's basically L-shaped, it comes to a pinch point in the middle. But other than that, it has sufficient area and frontage for lots in the, again, in the apartment two zoning district. The, the one stipulation that we have on this plan with the layout that we do have is, it does require that Salem Street be abandoned. We are showing, two of the buildings with slate encroachments into that right-of-way. We are proposing to petition the city to have that, I know paperwork has been, I don't believe anything's been filed as of yet. But I know the applicant does have an attorney working on that and preparing the necessary documents to petition the city for that abandonment. So this request that's before you tonight is predicated on that abandonment.
Okay, so let me ask, even before you finish, my understanding is, this is not a city street?
Salem Street is not a city street.
Turn to, I'll turn to the engineering department at this point, Director of Engineering.
Correct, it, it's an unaccepted paper street that's shown up on a subdivision plan when this area was laid out. So considered private or paper, similar to Duro on Chase, when they wanted to put parking in that. And impede on other people's rights, and we'll give another little history lesson of, when it is a city street, the city has the rights to abandon it. When it's not a city street, everyone who has afforded rights to that way, which could be an abutter, could be someone else on that subdivision plan. Have rights to Salem Street. So the property to the east, I twenty-two sixteen by Costa. I don't see the building or what the uses of that building, but I think on the aerial, it looks like some type of multifamily home.
Correct.
The Costas have legal rights to all of Salem Street. If they wanted to petition to construct Salem Street in its entirety, they have every right to do so. The fact that the existing structure falls within Salem Street, the Costas, and any other entity that has rights to Salem Street. Could require that that existing building be removed as it's impeding their access and rights in Salem Street. So I, I don't want to get too deep into that, I just want to answer that question to you, just for that. Just that one specific item with, the city cannot, the city can eliminate its rights to the private way for use in utilities. But it cannot abandon it because it does not own it.
So that, that makes it a Land Court issue?
Yeah.
Not a City of Fall River issue?
And you would need everyone that has rights.
I believe there are two, two parties that have rights there, it would be the applicant and it would be the Costas next door. So certainly, we would have to get them on board with that abandonment. And then, at that point, everybody would own up to the center line if they do agree with it. Part of what we're proposing, and I had submitted a couple of plans, Nina, if you can just call up the proposed condition plan, there you go. So it's not labeled, but on the side of the Costa house, what we'd be doing is constructing a driveway for them, sixteen-foot in width. Up along their sidewalk that would provide the off-street parking that they would be losing or missing. I don't know how they use it now, there's only a small portion of that pavement that extends on their side. But I do know that some of the tenants in that, I believe it's a three-family house, do use it for parking. So we'd want to compensate that and, and provide them with some means of... So we'd wanna compensate that and, and provide them, um, with, uh, some means of off-street parking as well.
Has that even been presented to them yet?
No.
Okay, then, I think we're out of, I think we're out of sequence here. I, I can't, I personally, and I will say this to my board, and they can do what they want with it, I can't give relief on something that you don't have clear access to at this point.
Okay.
All right, I, I just think it's, it's out of line. It, it, we could, we could grant it, and it may end up meaning nothing.
Correct.
And you've gotta push back up onto the property, shrink something, get off of what is now Salem Street, uh, and be back in front of us a second time. I, I just think it's, it's out of order and, if I'm not mistaken, it's Salem Street on the opposite side as well with the subdivision.
That is constructed though, yeah, the other side of Salem.
Whoever developed that may actually have some right there. So.
Mr. Chairman, that, that's.
Again, it's a land court issue. Let's not take chances with it. You've got an attorney working on it. I say, once you've, once you've hammered it out in land court, once you've hammered it out with, with the abutting property owner of the Costas, then, I think then is the time to come back in with the application.
That item aside, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, I would request that, that the board discuss the merits of unit count, parking, um, things of that nature to give the applicant some guidance. Because I, I think it would be fair to give the applicant the opportunity, potentially to table this, maybe modify this layout, maybe even reduce some street setbacks, maybe reduce the setbacks between the proposed buildings, and only provide the amount of parking that's absolutely required, which would be twenty-eight spaces, which I think you're providing much more than that now.
Yes, thirty-four.
You may be able to get rid of the entire eleven space bay, and pull both of those buildings further northwest and eliminate the need to get into Salem Street with whatever the setback would be to Salem Street. I think it's, I think it's overall a good project. It's getting rid of a super non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So I, I wouldn't want us to be bogged down on the Salem Street issue if the applicant can potentially reconfigure what's here and come back to us with a different layout that does not contemplate the abandonment of Salem Street. And that may address, I know we have some abutters here. I don't know if they're the Costas or not, but, um, that may eliminate their concerns as well.
And listen, there's no question in the quality of the development that your client puts together. He's added some fantastic developments to the city, to, to them, to the, to the advantage of, of the City of Fall River. This street situation, the Salem Street situation is what's bugging me.
So Jeff, similar to this, the Duro apartment building on Globe that was permitted for four hundred units, they had wanted to discontinue Ash and Center.
Correct.
Both private ways.
Okay.
And a number of those abutters came in, in opposition. So the law department had looked into, how do you abandon? If, if the, if this was a, if Salem Street ran through the property and your developer owned both sides of it, I think it's a different story.
Yes.
But I don't think the board can approve something that may or may not impede upon or advance, you know, impeding on someone's rights unless that was resolved first.
Exactly.
So what we're looking for, what we're asking for, for setbacks here is we're basically going down to fifteen feet on, along Rodman Street, fifteen feet along Holyoke Street, fifteen feet to the rear, uh, with the abutters that are on Tecumseh Street, and, you know, various different setbacks on Salem. Having looked at this tonight, if we could reduce, like, Holyoke Street is, it's being used. It's not like Salem Street on this side here. It is being used by the, um, I think there's a transportation company that, across. They do use it, um, but it, it's really, it goes, it, it goes to the back of the properties on Tecumseh Street with, to the extent where somebody, one of the homeowners there on Tecumseh has a driveway that comes in that way, and they, they park, um, the rear of their property. Having said that, that street does not get a lot of, uh, traffic coming, going up and down it. If we could reduce that setback from fifteen to ten, if the board would, um, you know, be willing to entertain that, we could shift these buildings over and probably reconfigure this to get, uh, the building, um, out of the right-of-way. Because right now, we're proposing it as a five-foot encroachment, uh, if nothing changes, so obviously, we can't build that. But we might be able to, um, to modify, uh, the plan in that manner.
I mean, right now, the building on Holyoke is on the street line, so you'd be improving
Correct.
Any, any setback there.
Correct, yes.
I think there's, I think there's many things that can be modified in this to get them on Salem Street.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I, I, again, I, I see merit in, I think it's pretty creative use of a pretty weird lot.
Right. No, and we had kicked around, believe me, there, there were probably about, probably about four or five different versions of plans that we played around with on this property to try to come up with something. And the applicant wanted to push forward with this one. Um, we, we can certainly go back to the drawing board, probably make some minor changes, um, and end up with the, you know, fourteen units and the required off-street parking. Uh, what, the, one of the other things I looked at too is, uh, one, one of the bays, maybe where we have the twelve, uh, if we did away with the perpendicular parking, did some parallel parking there, uh, because we could lose six spaces and still meet the, the, you know, the two spots per unit ratio. We can, and then we could push that parking lot a little bit closer to their other properties, um, to get further away from Salem Street. And I think at that point, we could maintain, uh, more, well, we, we'd actually have a setback to Salem Street as opposed to being in it.
Right, and, and if you have, if you can perfect the abandonment, you know.
Yeah, it, it.
You're fine, but, but land court can take forever.
Right, oh yeah.
Which is, you know,
Well aware of that, yeah.
Which is a problem. So if this is redrafted, you don't need Salem Street. You can probably save some bucks with the abandonment. That's entirely up to your client. Not chase the abandonment, not, not, not mess around with land court and still come in with something. You know, I, I agree with, with Dan. Let's get some input from the board here. How do you feel about the general idea of this? I'm suggesting strongly that we do not try to vote on this thing tonight.
I'm, I'm just hesitant to design property for somebody else, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with making a motion to table if that's what they're looking to do.
Yeah.
But, um, I think we have some people in the audience.
I, I was still going to the audience, yeah. I think, I think you've got a sound design. I think it just needs.
It needs to be tweaked.
Some tweaks.
Yes.
That said, is, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Is anyone here to speak in opposition?
Because I'm gonna be losing my four parking spaces.
Yeah.
I just need a name and address.
My name's Deborah Raposa. I live at seven ninety-one Rodman Street.
Okay.
Um, the, the parking on Salem Street, which he's, like, referring to as where we've been parking the tenants at seven ninety-one Rodman Street, that piece of property, she's the one that has the grass cut there, had trees cut down. Nobody's ever done anything with that.
Uh, wha, hang on, which piece of property?
Seven ninety-one Rodman Street.
Salem Street, I think she's talking about.
You go to the existing conditions plan? The presentation one?
And any of them, like my daughter, my son-in-law, they can move, but they park there too. We're not gonna give that up.
And it's by, by eminent domain.
There you go.
Well, and if you've filed for adverse possession or eminent domain, that's cool, but if you haven't.
I think they did years ago, which was my grandfather and the original owners of that garage, which was Tommy.
Okay, this is not a court of law. I wish, because I wanna wear a robe up here so bad.
You can go home and wear it.
I have. But, no, seriously, if, if eminent domain was filed and perfected, there'd be something on the title. There, it would exist. It would be in the land court. There again, land court is the place to go because it is private. If you have rights to park on it, that's cool. Otherwise, if you don't, you don't. And it's just convenient and it's been there. And I'm not trying to say it one way or the other. So if you think adverse possession was filed, there's gotta be a document someplace. So you can't just come in and say, "I'm not gonna lose it. I'm not gonna give it up," if you don't have a right to. And again, this is not a court of law, but just be careful because if you think you've got it, prove it. And then, that takes away the whole abandonment of Salem Street situation.
The reason why we're saying that is because when Mr. Lebec went to build that last part of the garage, right, I guess he came down here and he said that because nobody could build on that section because it goes all the way, it's all ledge, going all the way up, that hill. And because he was building there, they told him that half of that street was my parents' and the other half was his, and it was because of eminent domain. That's what he was told down here.
Gotta be a document. That's all I'm gonna say. I'm not.
So, I, I can explain again a little bit. So on private ways, the abutting landowners own to the center line of the way, so half and half the way there. That's ownership. However, rights to pass, repass, and, and construct are through the entire way. Ownership and, and rights are two different things, but we're, I think we're gonna get that item resolved. My question is, are, are either one of you the owners of that property? And what's your name?
Patricia Costa.
Patricia Costa, okay. And Nina, I'm, I'm noticing that they're not listed on the abutters list, which they should have been. So I'm glad that you're here, but.
Did, did you receive a, a letter in the mail? Yes, I, I sent the letter.
I'm looking at the list and I don't.
Do you hold it under a trust of some sort?
I just don't see, unless, is it I twenty-two lot sixteen?
Yes.
I don't see that listed.
I, I sent it though. You got, you got it in the mail.
I know, but, right, did we add one? What's the, what is the mailing on the, you have the envelope? Right, but what is the, what is the name that, you have the envelope, but no?
No, but it came in her name.
All right, I'm just trying to figure out how you got it unless we picked up on this.
There was an error on the abutters list.
I think I.
Nina has the corrected.
So this isn't, this isn't the.
So the one that's on the application is not correct?
I mean, I usually check it myself.
Yeah.
And go through to make sure that I'm not missing anything.
Well, in any event, you were notified, so I'm glad that that's the case.
Yeah.
But I didn't receive an updated abutters list or anything, so that, what's there is what was given from the assessors office.
Right.
Because one time, um, that's the, they used to.
Park all their trucks there, yeah.
Their trucks. And he parked, he went to park in my driveway, or my driveway. And I said, "Sorry, you can't park there." He goes, "Why not?" I said, "That's private property and I, this is what I'm parking here." He came down here and he looked into it.
Yep.
And they said, they told him that I had four parking spaces.
Yeah.
Who we talked to at that time, I do not know.
We're gonna try and resolve that as part of this.
And, and you can see on that existing conditions plan, that dash line is, is the center line that, that Mr. Agas is referring to, um, where the ownership between the two parties on either side would own up to.
It's not ownership. As, as Mr. Agas pointed out, it would be, it would be rights to it, but not necessarily ownership. And that's what needs to get squared away.
Well, I think the, the rights, I think it is, isn't it ownership? Isn't that what you said? And then the rights would be
to entirety, to layout, to for everybody. But ownership would be to center line.
And owner, ownership is to the center line.
Yeah, you can't impede their way to pass and repass.
Right, you can't block their, their right to pass and repass, so, um, we can, we can modify the plan and, and I think square away the, uh, the issues with showing the proposed encroachments into that area. Now, fully understanding the, um, legal part of, you know, what's going on with Salem Street there. I thought it was just gonna be a discontinuance, but it seems as though that's not the case, so, um.
I, I would vote for a continuance.
He's gonna, he's gonna ask for it.
Yeah.
This would, you know, how long is it gonna take?
But I think that's the point, right?
You'd go back, redraft, would you want two months to put everything together? It seems like you've looked at a lot of propositions.
He can get this back in for next month.
Yeah, I mean, I would, um, again, because it, my, my plan at this point would be do away with any proposed improvements in Salem Street. Pull everything out. We might be close up to the line, but we're not gonna be blocking any, uh, you know, right to pass or repass with anything that we're proposing.
It's gonna be better than an encroachment.
Right.
That currently exists.
Yeah, so we can.
Just for, for the abutters here, we're not, we're not touching Salem Street. And he's going back to redraft this so it's not in Salem Street. So your situation on that, that half of, of Salem Street remains the same. That would've remained the same anyway.
Right.
But the question becomes the abandonment of the street. It's not a public way. It's, it's, it's private.
Right.
So, everything stays status quo for you? And unless somebody comes along, probably notified through the land court, asking about abandoning the right-of-way. That still doesn't change your rights. That's, that's still your, your half there to the, the southern half of, of Salem Street.
And, and quite simply, just looking at this plan here, what I probably, just thinking off the top of my head, what, we're gonna be taking down the garage that encroaches into Salem Street now. That's gonna go away. We're not gonna have any new, uh, proposed structures in Salem Street. We can leave the, the pavement that's adjacent to Rodman Street in Salem Street for the, for the abutters' use. Um, really serves no purpose to us.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, it's a huge benefit to them. So, you know, we're not gonna propose to remove any of that, even like the section that's on, on ha, uh, half. We'll just keep it as is. Um, I'm not sure if that, where the access point, uh, for that is, if it's, it looks as though it would, it is in the right-of-way.
It is.
Just look at how the cars are parked in front of the, the garage, so, yeah, I mean, we'll just saw-cut it, get rid of the pavement, you know, in front of the building on our property, and, uh, keep that driveway there for the abutters' use.
And please, either through you, your office, or whoever is counsel on this, please stay in touch with, with your, the abutting property owner.
Sure.
And probably check in with the, the other property owner that is at the end of the street too. I don't think they have a driveway going through.
Normally, normally you don't have rights to the butt end of a street, but that's not every case.
But you've got the same thing right now on, um, you do have somebody doing kind of the same thing. But then again, Holyoke Street is a city street.
It is constructed.
It's constructed. It has.
I don't know, I don't know if it's an accepted way.
I don't know.
Because we weren't dealing with that.
It has a full right-of-way, it has a full width right-of-way. It seems to be.
Being utilized for access, yeah.
And you do have somebody that has a driveway cut in at the end of that.
Correct.
Which I think is the Murphy property.
Yeah, and, and this one, you'd be hard-pressed just with the grade change going from Rodman Street up to the property on, on Tecumseh. So, yeah, I mean, I, I can, I can say for certain, sitting here tonight, that we, the proposal coming back is gonna be to saw-cut that pavement, leave that as is. Everything in Salem Street, all that pavement, leave it as is for their benefit to use. Um, it, it serves no purpose to our proposed development, so, and obviously, it's a huge benefit to them.
You're asking for a continuance?
Continuance, correct.
Do you wanna come back?
March twenty-first or April eighteenth?
March twenty-first, yeah.
You have a request for a continuance. Thank you for showing up. I appreciate, I said, "Thank you for showing up." That's what it's about. You gotta speak up for your rights, right?
When you're losing something, you gotta show up, right?
Well, I mean, you know what, no matter what, you wouldn't have lost it. It's just a question of, you know, what's the status of that land? And right now, it's a, it's a private, non-accepted street.
The rest of that, isn't that commercial property?
What do you mean, the rest of it?
The, where, all those garages, is it that commercial?
It's commercially used. It's residentially zoned.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a residential zone and a commercial use. So it's a non-conforming use in the zone right now.
And we will re-notify you, so, for the twenty-first meeting.
All right, can we have a motion on the request for continuance?
Motion to grant.
Motion from Dan. Can we have a second?
Second.
On the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, make sure you get Nina your tabling fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Soon. I don't want her hunting you down.
Or what?
I would never submit it at the last minute.
I don't know. I'll, I'll, I'll let you know exactly how much it is after the presentation.
Okay, item number five, election of office.
You could hold them hostage.
One of them's still good. No, one of them's still good. We're gonna change them. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, let's hammer this out.
Election.
Election of officers. Chair, vice chair, clerk, treasurer, sergeant-at-arms, we're gonna expand it, everybody gets a title.
If no one wants any changes, someone can just make a motion to keep the same state.
Second.
No, I, I can't, I, I can't maintain, uh.
No, okay.
My term expires before then.
Whoopsie. When did your term expire? What are you telling me? Have we already talked to the mayor so you can stay? Don't have me.
You don't want any.